All right, as I said, we're having a public hearing on the special town meeting warrant. I'll read the articles and ask the relevant speakers to speak to the articles. The first article is to see if the town will vote to hear or act on reports of the Finance Committee or any other board or committee. At this point in time, we have not prepared a report, but we will be preparing a report for the town meeting. All right, moves on to the capital articles. Article two, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 for the purchase of supplemental downtown streetlight improvements. Now, I'll ask Mr. Saltzbeck to speak to that warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this item was placed last night totaling in $100,000. It's made up of two pieces. So, the first is a $65,000 expense. It's representative of a funding shortfall, which is a piece that we would like to stress, meaning that it didn't go over budget. I think we had applied on the hope to Robinson-Brocker Foundation that they would be able to fund the full supplemental amount. They came up just a little bit under, thank you. Representing 65,000 of that $100,000 figure, the remaining 35,000 would be for the same style of streetlights for the new park down at Spring and Lake Street, as well as the new parking lot across from the library between Pleasant and Central Street. And the recommendation is to use free cash for that.
Okay. Are there any questions from the committee?
Mr. Saltzbeck, just curiosity, was there a 5% or 6% buffer included into that at the first, when it was first?
For the $100,000 figure?
No, the whole project.
For the Central Street project? What was there?
Well, you're saying you were $100,000 short. Usually, there's a buffer into the whole project that sometimes can pick up the little things that go over. I'm just wondering if there was.
Sure, understood. So, only 65,000 of that is for Central Street?
Uh huh.
So, Central Street did have what's called a contingency. This is a unique part of that project in that where it's state-funded, the state will fund base-level Cobra Head streetlights, which they did do. Any additional cost, in this instance, because it's a more stylized and ornate municipal style of streetlight, the town would have to pick up. So, we couldn't dip into the contingency for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from anybody in the audience? All right, when we're done, we'll move on to Article three, see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $145,000 for Phase Two library repairs. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Saltzbeck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this article is actually the reason I was five minutes late. So, there have been some recent fluctuations in terms of the exact costs. We're looking at numbers that I was holding in my office versus numbers that Director King was holding over at the library and trying to compare them to the numbers that the architect is holding. I was on the phone with him about 10 minutes ago, and unfortunately, he was also walking into a seven o'clock meeting. So, it's not something we're going to be able to change this evening. That said, the merit of the project doesn't necessarily change. The figure may be off by roughly $70,000, but we're going to take a look at it and have some type of update for this board and for the Board of Selectmen tomorrow. With that said, what we are requesting here, be it 145 or the higher figure, is a remainder on that project. It is the third time Phase Two has come before town meeting. Reason being, more than anything else, cost escalation. And I think when we came back the second time at the recent annual, it was the hope to try to make up for that in its entirety. Unfortunately, the project went out to bid and ended up coming back even beyond what that was. So, we're looking at a total project cost of about 1.2 million. This was originally recommended to be funded using a borrowing, and it was amended last night to recommend funding it using free cash. So, if anybody has any questions, or if Mr. Barrow would like to add anything.
So, just so you know, going forward, we are doing a fundamental change on capital plan. One of the things Doug brought back from one of the meetings was that we are now going to come back to you guys come September, looking to have money to put bid specs together. So, this will no longer happen. So, what will happen is we will get bids, solid bids, in from now on. We will come to ask for money for bid specs to be put in, architectural design to be put in at this type of meeting. And then, when we get the bid specs back and the bid goes out, the bid will say going forward, "Subject to Town Funding." So, when we come back to you, we will have a hard number that's been put through the bid cycle, and that way, we can hold the prices. Because what's been happening, obviously, where this is, most of the work that we're going to have coming up is all specialized work, the library, old Murdoch. It requires specialized contractors. We can't just hire anybody to do that. And what's happened is the cost escalation over the last four years has just been astronomical. We had COVID delay everything, nobody could get anything done. Now, there's so much work out there, the prices just keep rising and trying to get somebody in to do the work. You're going to find going forward that it's going to be harder and harder to get more people to bid on jobs because they're so busy, or they'll be pushing them out for years to come.
Anybody in the audience have a question or comment? Okay, so, as I understand it, the figure in that article might change?
Correct, it may increase no higher than 70,000. But we're trying to address, and I apologize, this is taking some quick thinking, I learned about it five minutes in advance of this meeting. So, we're looking at a couple of different options. First, I want to definitively nail down what that number is, and I'll be doing that first thing in the morning tomorrow. If we determine that we need to change it, there may be an opportunity to call and advertise in time to call a meeting of the Board of Selectmen on Monday morning to reopen the warrant for the purposes of amending that amount and then closing it again. I just want to be able to confirm that if we have to do that. The other piece is exploring, if that's not on the table, if it's 70,000, which I don't anticipate it to be any higher than that. So, we'll say worst-case scenario, 70. Looking into how much we're carrying for a contingency in the budget to see realistically if we could find ways to value-engineer our way into that number. And also, looking at other resources we may have available. So, you know, if it, push comes to shove, we end up not needing the contingency, and then it's, you know, there's only a $5,000 gap. Well, we have additional building maintenance funds that we built into the budget this year that we could help wash it that way. So, considering 10 different directions right now, and we'll be narrowing it down in the morning to one of them.
So, Mr. Saltzbeck, if we add up everything we have in free cash on that warrant as stands, we have a balance of what you anticipate will be certified of $33,197. So, we don't have 75,000 to play with.
So, that number actually has since increased as well. So, in conversations that I had with the accountant today...
Okay, are you pulling this out of your pocket, or what?
No, I always keep a little something extra. So, in conversations I had with our accountant today, we don't have a number that we're willing to put out publicly and commit to yet, but we do feel it's going to be trending closer to a million-dollar number.
Perfect, thank you.
I think earlier, we thought it was going to be seven or eight. It may be nine. So, I can't say that with 100% confidence, and it is dependent upon the state reviewing it and certifying it. So, we won't know until the special town meeting.
But if you're going to have a, hopefully have a special meeting of the selectmen, if you need to, to revisit this, they would need to know what that certified amount is before they vote on this article. So, will you have it by Monday?
We won't have the certified amount by Monday.
But you'll have what you think will be?
If the question is that if it's the higher figure, would we be drawing down our free cash to a level that I'm not comfortable with? No. I think we'd be drawing it down a little bit more, but we'd still have more than enough wiggle room there.
Okay, thank you.
So, as I understand it, then you're very confident that we'll have a figure certified before town meeting?
Close to 100% certainty, because I'm relying on other people. So, if I trust the state government 100%, then I would say, ah, yes, I have 100% confidence.
95.
And that would also be in context of the fact that we have a $1.1 million or so in grant money that needs to be drawn down. That's not likely to be done before town meeting, is that correct?
Correct. So, that money, more than likely, it'll end up being 1 to 1.2 million is effectively going to be locked up over the next fiscal year. It doesn't go away, we don't lose it, it just won't be certified until next year.
All right. So, yeah, so by, I understand that, but my, and my concern, I guess, is the same with that Mohad, just to make sure that we're not depending on more free cash than we're going to have certified by the meeting. But you're confident that we have, we're not overspending that?
Understood. And I know that you understand it, this is more so for the benefit of people that may be watching at home.
Yep, yep. All right, any other questions on Article three? Article four, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash to a sum of $95,000 to supplement the FY23 highway materials line for the purpose of infrastructure improvements on Pleasant Street, Summer Street, and Island Road? For those who are watching, I just wanted to introduce Mr. Barrow, Mike Barrow. I assume everybody knows Mike, but that's not necessarily true.
True.
He's the chair of the Capital Planning Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so, $95,000 for highway materials.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this item, once again, is kind of in response to dealing with the escalating costs we've seen across the board for materials and labor, and that had hit our fiscal '23 paving plan as well. So, what we're asking is to increase the fiscal '23 highway materials line by $95,000. This one's a little nuanced. So, when it comes down to the funding itself, the state budget ended up funding about 90,000 more than we had anticipated and projected back in May. Those numbers have since been finalized, so we have a little more funding available. On the second piece of that is that the Pleasant Street and Island Road components, we had intended to do as part of that plan, we ended up holding off because the costs were so high. So, our ask for that 95,000 now is that if we wait to do it in the spring, the costs are probably going to be even higher than they are today. And if we have the funding available, we felt it would make sense to put it to use rather than save it at the expense of, you know, higher costs later.
Questions? So, the 90, the additional $95,000 grant are in state funding. If we took no action on this, would just sit in revenues as unanticipated revenues and not be able to be acted on until next year?
Right.
When the free cash is certified from FY23?
Yep, it would just sit there and fall to free cash next year.
All right. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Guerrero?
Instead of using the free cash, is there funds in the infrastructure budget to use for these, for this budget?
The what?
In which, are you referencing like the ARPA funds?
Yeah, the ARPA funds.
No, we could potentially use ARPA funds for that purpose. I think the reasoning for this one was that just where revenues were coming in, it's not even that revenues were coming in higher, it's that our expenses in other areas are coming in lower, I think is the best way to describe it. So, if we had known this in advance of town meeting, that 90,000 or so would have been put to work elsewhere, but we didn't know until the state finalized their budget. So, ARPA funds are available, but it's not our recommended funding source.
So, if that's the case, going back to the library then, and you do need to juggle 25 or 30,000, you can, using some ARPA funds for this if you needed to?
Yeah, that was part of the very quick conversation I had upstairs, is that there are some areas, if we had to, we would obviously work really hard. Well, we always work really hard to try to protect our contingency, but we'd be incentivized to work that much harder. The other piece of that, though, is you don't want to do that to a degree that you're starting to diminish the value of the project, and you're cutting corners and doing things cheap instead of doing it the right way. And I don't want to run into that situation either.
All right, any other questions on Article four? All right, moving on to Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow the sum of $618,750 to fund the design services for the new fire station, provided, however, that the town votes hereon to borrow funds for this purpose. Such a vote could be contingent upon the approval by the voters of an election that amounts needed to repay the debt, and interest on the borrowing shall be excluded from the limitations of the tax levy imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is for the fire station design. It's recommended that it be funded through a debt exclusion. For folks watching at home, effectively, what that means is it's an expense that's not built into our general operating budget in the same way that a borrowing would be, for example, paying our debt service line. What that would mean is, is that while taxes more than likely would increase next year, as they tend to do year over year, it would increase roughly $33.94 higher every year for the next five years until that debt falls off, and then that would drop off the tax bill. So, we did crunch those numbers with the Division of Local Services and DOR. There's a spreadsheet that was available in the packet that highlights that figure. The one I reference is based on an average residential tax bill. So, that's just something that I'd want to stress.
So, what's average, like $200,000 house or $250,000 house?
242,405, exactly, using fiscal '22 numbers. So, there's also an entire grid that kind of breaks it down if you have a house that is above that range and gives you a rough idea of what that impact would be on your household. So, the other piece of this project is, at first pass or most recent anyway, the fire station was at about 12.5 million dollars. Chief Smith and I have been working pretty diligently over the past year and a half or so to rein in that cost and to try to find ways to value-engineer that project in such a way that it will tighten up the budget, but it won't leave you with a fire station that's not realistic in terms of the community's needs today, but also realistic in terms of opportunities to expand in the future and serve the community for the next, you know, 30 or 50 years, or however long it would be. And that's something that we're trying to keep in mind here. So, with that said, we do have Chief Smith with us available, if any of you, as I'm sure, probably have questions, and we can run through that now.
Sure, that'd be great. Chief Smith? Good evening. Well, I think the, I guess, the burning question here is that, you know, this is the prelude to building a new fire station. So, the money we're talking about here is for design and spec work and what have you. And the commitment to spending the money for that certainly would hinge, I would think, for a lot of people on what's going to be the cost of the new fire station. Because if you're going to vote to pay $650,000 to make that available, then you'll want to know what you're committing to. So, I'll turn it over to you, Tom, and, you know, let you...
All right, the 618,000 is based off of the most recent renovation that we've cut down to. Originally, we started off at a very high 28,000 square feet, which did come out with an estimate of approximately $14 million. That was the original one back in 2019 that went to town floor. We then sat down with the architect, the committee, I believe Chairman Kane, that you joined us at that, as we were cutting down on that, I look back, and we reduced that down to approximately 19,000 square feet, making some cuts, still keeping the second story in the building and moving out with the garage. When Town Manager Saltzbeck came into town, he sat down with me and told me he's going to punch at 100 holes in the project, and I think he did 101. We sat down, we went, met with the architects again. We then cut the project down from a station that was going to be two stories and spread out to one that is going to be actually a second non-attached building to the current one with a walkway in between. What that does is it allows the existing station to be used while the other one is being built. It cuts down on the codes that, you know, primary apparatus has to be in when it's attached to the other building. And what it also does is it allows for us to have it on one floor, but still be able to put in the necessary rooms and equipment. A lot of times, people think, oh, you spread it out, it's more footage and more concrete and more that way. However, what we did also was we sat down with the existing plans. We eliminated any little jogs that would create walls. We changed hallways from seven feet to six feet. We changed, eliminated a few restrooms. We changed the distance between the trucks, I believe it was from six feet to five, so that you could still pass through when the doors were open. However, you didn't have the additional extra space. We literally tightened down, I believe, everything that we could to still keep the integrity of the project, but at the same time, recognize the community's desire to reduce the cost and reduce the size. We acknowledged that on town floor, we were told, we had, you know, there were certain things that the community wanted. We needed to go before capital planning, which we have gone a couple of times before capital planning. They wanted us to greatly reduce the cost, and square footage-wise, we've reduced it from 28,000 to 12,000 on new construction. So, overall, the project's gone down to, the last cost, the cost estimator on the current project is 8.2 million, I believe, is what the cost estimator came in at. It does have some cost escalators figured into that to ensure that we are going forward correctly. The reason we are coming before you for the 618,000 is for the architectural design, as well as the bid documents and to go out to bid so that, moving forward, the one pet peeve that I have on a project is I don't want to come back. I want to come to the townspeople and the voters with a number that is a bid number in hand, and I think that way, they know what they're voting on, on that. It's a little different than how we have done things here in the town in the past in different times, different things work differently. I just think on the size of a project, to not come forward with the number on the design first is asking the people to write a blank check. If we come forward on a 618,000 article and we're able to get the specs, get the bid specs, come to the town, it could be at that time a price of 8.1, it could be 8.4. I'm not saying there isn't going to be a little bit of a swing depending on it when it goes out to bid and that, but it gives the people the number that they have, that they need, and they should have before them, in my opinion.
What do you see as the timeline in the project?
The timeline, once the, if the article was to pass at both the ballot and at the town meeting, the article, then to go out to bid would be approximately 10 months for them to do the architectural design, then come out with bid documents, and then come out with the bids, for the subcontractor bids and that. So, it's approximately at least 10, minimum eight to 10 months on just putting together the architectural design and putting together the bid documents and executing them correctly.
So, you're not expecting to build till 2025?
It's...
I'm just looking at, next May is the vote, 10 months for architect. Unlikely, they would start building, because then it would have to go to town meeting to be approved.
And that's part of the reason why, unfortunately, and I know a lot of people say it's not a good time, the length of this project and moving things forward, I don't know if there ever will be a good time, unfortunately. We are in a time where costs are very fluctuating. I just believe that trying to keep at least pushing it forward, and it, and there's no guarantee, and as Chairman Kane indicated, it's showing that there's going to be basically a commitment on the project. Well, what it could do is it shows that you've got the architectural drawings, and if at the time, the town is not in a position that they feel they are able to vote the entire project, if it was six months later, maybe it'd be a better time. There isn't a guarantee that they have to pass it immediately in 10 months, but the guarantee is, is that they'd have the architectural designs prepared, and they would be able to then go forward as this town sees fit. So, it's, it is the beginning phase, or the middle phase, I guess technically, on the project, but it still gives the opportunity for the community to, ultimately, at the end, they make that decision 10 months, 16 months, you still have the plans and the design, architectural drawings.
So, realistically, the earliest that the second question would be asked would be a year from now?
Probably be looking at at least a year, by the time they...
Not for the, obviously not for the May town meeting?
The, without having the exact schedule in front of me, the drawings could be done early, they could be done in 14 months, there's no...
Well, if we don't take it to the ballot until May 2023 for that, then the drawings would have to be...
They could hold a special election for the prop 2 and 1/2. I don't think they have to wait to the town.
Mr. Chair?
Has to be 90 days, right?
Mr. Chair?
Written timeline, yeah.
All right. If everything goes according to plan, we will be back here in our, coming to October meeting with a bid document in hand. And then, you would look to have...
Well, that's not what, Mr...
If it's eight to 10 months out, we're looking by midsummer to have the documents back in place to go out to bid.
If we vote at May 2023 town meeting, and you're looking at eight to 10 months for the actual design, that brings us into 2024, correct?
If I could interject...
I think the prop 2 and 1/2 vote, there's some strict timelines to it. It can't be less than a certain amount of time, and I don't know what the times are, it can't be longer than, more than X amount of time after the town meeting vote.
It's 90 days.
Yeah, 90 days.
It's 90 days, so...
90 days. So, it would be May, be next?
And we did map that out, so that would put us in, I think, before January, there would have to be an election, and we did have a ballot vote. Then we did have a conversation with our clerk about that, just to kind of prep for it. So, with that said, if it went through, you're looking at either, if it's eight months, if it takes, let's say, worst-case scenario, it takes eight months to actually get the design off the ground, you're going to want to put it out to bid for about a month, and then we're going to need that figure well in advance of any town meeting, special or annual or otherwise, at least two months. So, you know, realistically, you're looking at about a year from the time that it starts to the time that you're actually voting at town meeting with an actual biddable number.
2024?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's not a short-term process, unfortunately. I wish it was quicker.
Sorry, should speak into the mic. I would be concerned with a ballot vote in January, with many of our folks have gone south.
I wonder if voting by mail would be an option, in the most literal sense, I'm wondering. I don't know. I don't know.
Just a minute while I come over there and smack you.
Well, I think that the, you know, speaking for myself, the, the idea of being clear that, that putting the money into the plans does buy the town something. You know, it buys the town a set of plans that then becomes a direction for the fire department at whatever point it is the town feels it can, it can afford it. But it's, it's, I guess my concern was that we'd spend this money and then, you know, we wouldn't be able to fund the proj, the actual project that have spent the money. But I understand your point. Any questions for the chief?
I have, I have a couple. Mrs. Salter had asked last night if it's capped at eight point two or eight point five, and you did answer it tonight that you can't. You can't possibly cap it because you don't know what the costs are going to be. You can just hope. I know I'm on the finance committee for our church and we need a new heating system. Six months ago, it came in at thirty percent higher when it came in on Friday, thirty percent. So we have no idea what it's gonna come in.
The goal of them is to design to that six hundred and eighteen thousand dollar project total, which was at eight point two.
Right, yeah.
And they basically would be told that's the number they need to, and again, if it's a, changes something of a material inside or changes the, as long as in, in my mind, it doesn't change the integrity of the project to something that's not worthwhile of Winchton, then I think that it would still be that, that, that is the ultimate target number of that, six hundred and eighteen thousand.
And something that you and I have talked about at length, and I, I noted last night boss meeting, Mrs. Anderson was talking about Front Street, School Street and Tannery Hill. And her comment was, we need all the information to be able to make an informed decision. And so to our longstanding debate, twelve-hour shifts versus twenty-four-hour shifts, the use of overtime instead of hiring, the use of scheduling and maybe having to revise schedules when people are out for long-term sicknesses, because I think the last couple of years, it's been around three hundred thousand in overtime. And then a bid for contracting private ambulance services just to see what it would be. I don't think it costs a lot to go out for a bid, but we could, we would have that information to make the comparison. I know that the ambulance brings in a little over seven hundred thousand in revenue, but it does cost us a little over a million dollars to run that service. Not saying it's a bad thing for the town, but I think when we know all the possibilities, we can make a better decision.
We have looked into, to, just to answer a few of your questions, we have looked into the scheduling, looking at approximately, as many of the state departments in the state, probably about eighty percent run the twenty-four hour shifts as far as fire departments and the ones that don't, are much smaller or don't have full-time individuals. We did, I did look at the amount with the potential benefits and that, to look at the same scheduled coverage to keep providing without us having to change any of our service plans with the state to keep our ALS section going. We'd still be looking at approximately hiring nine people to cover the difference in the shifts, because even though it sounds, it's not quite double because they're working a twenty-four hour to keep three of them on, but in order to do the same amount of hours in the day and you're only doing twelve-hour shifts, you're doing
It's, but see, that doesn't compute with me because you have four, if you take four days, four twelve-hour shifts, two twenty-four hour shifts, exactly the same.
Right, but you got, you gotta do both ends of the clock. You gotta do the day shift and the night shift, so you got two twelves.
Yeah.
For each, each twenty-four equals
You have two, you have two twenty-four hours too, right? I mean, one, one shift, one crew doesn't do twenty-four hours, seven days a week.
No, but mapped out on a calendar, each twenty-four hour shift equals two, one person working a twenty-four hour shift equals two people working twelve-hour shifts.
You'll have to show me that because it's, it's not connected.
And, and it does, and just on one other thing, as far as the overtime that I know you had mentioned last week, the, they don't have a built-in overtime schedule. Their forty-eight hours is all straight time. It's not an eight hours of overtime every week. They do automatically, they work a forty-eight hour straight time schedule.
That's illegal?
Yes, yeah. The fire service is, it is a legal thing they can do, actually, they can do up to a fifty-two, but don't tell them that because we'll be scheduling them for it.
Because I, I, well, I just wondered because I know the overtime has been, you know,
We've had
Because you haven't, according to you, haven't had the personnel. And, and again, I, I don't think this is the right place for the conversation, but if, if we could just get the information out there that we have looked at it, we have gone in deep and hear the charts, it's not just us talking. I can show you, you know?
I certainly don't mind.
I think it helps because when you look at that much money and overtime, it's like, whoa, because if you divide it by eight full-time employees, that's like twenty-five grand a year and it, that doesn't compute.
No, I certainly can sit down sometime. I, I, I think it's a little bit outside of the article-wise, but certainly moving forward in the future.
But going forward, because we would have, as you said, about a year and a half anyhow, if everything passed before the actual station is built to say, look, we did do our research, we did do our homework and here it is, and lay it out.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. I, I know, I'm, I like research, I enjoy it. Believe it or not, one of those people, I guess. But we certainly have no issue with that. As far as the station project goes, I really think that we've, we've cut this down to where, where we, I feel that we've checked the boxes that we, that we tried to listen to. We had a lot of people input. We had some good meetings with capital planning. I know I got some great ideas that were very, you know, very much I hadn't even thought of on different things. And we've also got, going forward, I've looked at the possibility of different fire station projects across the state where they've used, brought in dedicated rooms. They've had families that live from all across the country that decide they have family members that always grew up, say, in Winchton. They want to sponsor a community room and they donate it up to five hundred thousand dollars or more. It doesn't have to be the individual here, but that also can cut down the project if we put that out, especially if we've got a timeframe, once we know what we're having for rooms with a design, then we're able to go out and encourage people to, you know, make a donation in memory of a loved one or something, make a donation, you know, in somebody's memory. And that's a possibility too.
And also, put out on your Facebook pages that you have reduced it by from twenty-eight thousand square feet to nineteen thousand. You have taken off the second stories because right now you've just said, we reduced it, but we don't know what.
Well, part of what, part of
That shows your work.
Right. Part of our plan is, I'm putting together, we're gonna do two, and I just got the dates now that we know it's going forward to the, on the warrant too, we're gonna be doing two Zoom meetings for the community so they can log in, see PowerPoints, see the project, how it's been cut. We are gonna, you know, plan to use the social media to get that out to the people. We're also gonna do, I'll be putting together a handout to give out at the different events that we do at the fire station, be it an open house that we plan to have, where we're gonna be having an open house along with doing a car seat installation checks to try to, because we do have a installation tech on the department that's going to be just checking the kids' car seats, making sure they're installed right. We're going to go over the station at different events with the, hopefully with a handout that I put together, just to get that information out. But initially, we wanted to bring it to the Board of Selectmen last night, bring it to your board tonight and basically explain the work done on the project.
And I'll call you and set up a meeting. I like the data too.
My phone always rings, I don't mind.
Anybody else want to give him a hard time?
Any other questions for Chief Smith or the audience? Yes.
To the mic, please.
Jane LaPointe from Central Street. My question's not for the chief, it's for Justin, just to be clear on this. When you talk about the increase in the property taxes, the, in that chart, I just want to think it's important for people to understand that that's on an annual basis, not each bill that comes out during the course of the year.
That is correct, so it would be thirty-three ninety-four for the year.
Yeah, I just, I thought that's what it was, but probably best to
It's a five-year term?
Good point.
Over five years.
Yeah, thank you.
Important clarification, thank you.
Great. If there aren't any, any more questions, we'll move on to Article Six.
Thank you.
Thank you. See if the town will vote to appropriate nine million, five hundred sixty thousand dollars, which will be expended to pay the cost of designing, constructing, equipping and furnishing, replacement of the main water line from Ashburnham Winchonan Water Filtration Plant and the payment of all of the costs incidental related to. And that, to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow this amount under and pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Forty-four Chapter Eight, Section Five, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state available aid for the project and that all or any portion of the amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote may be borrowed through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust and any appropriate official or officials of the town are hereby authorized to execute any agreements with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that may be required in connection with any loan obtained through the, through the trust. Wordy, but sounds like it covers a lot of options.
It certainly does. So this pipe is, what was known to me as the six and a half million dollar pipe when I first got to town, and now it's an almost ten million dollar pipe. And we're trying to find a way to address this because we've come to the determination that punting on this item just really isn't an option any longer. It's not going away, it's not gonna get any better, it's only gonna get worse and it's only gonna get more expensive. So working with Director Corodo and a consultant, we've been trying to devise a plan to file an application through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. The benefit in doing that is that it would allow us to borrow at a very low rate, two point four percent. It's extraordinarily advantageous for us to borrow at that low rate over a thirty-year stretch. But the other perk is that there's a built-in loan forgiveness as part of that. At minimum, it would be nineteen percent. So on a nine and a half million dollar project, you're looking right off the bat at getting about one point nine million dollar for, one point nine million dollars forgiven. That's the benefit and that, that's at the minimum. The struggle, though, is that even with that forgiveness, you're still looking at a pretty sizable number and that's what we're trying to, to crunch here. So there's a few different angles. If you're looking at the budget of the project itself, nine point five million, the first thing that we would want to try to do is value engineer that project, try to bring that number down, you know, by several hundred thousand dollars at minimum. There are some areas in here where we're carrying a little bit extra for contingency.
You, you, you keep saying value engineer. Can you explain that for the public, please?
I certainly can. So anytime we have a project designed, we don't just take it at face value. There's always opportunities to get an extra set of eyes on things and try to find ways to rein in cost. I think historically in town, we probably could have been doing it a little bit more. It's one of my greatest joys in doing this work is finding ways to do projects more efficiently at a, at a cost that's more realistic. It's indirectly, I mean, you can, you can go out and get grants, which we also like to try to do, and that's one side of it, try to find additional revenue sources. But right off the bat, you'd be foolish to not try to reduce the project cost if you can. And so when we're talking about value engineering, we're talking about reducing the project costs in areas that don't really diminish what you're getting. So for example, value engineering the fire station. The library project, we value engineered that one, even though it's coming in higher. It came in even over that amount and we went back and said, well, you know, do you have to do plaster work in these areas where you could do drywall instead? Little, little things like that, that maybe the architect didn't necessarily consider. It's not necessarily to the architect or engineer's benefit to really poke hard at those soft areas because they're not footing the bill, but we are footing the bill. So we're gonna, we're gonna poke holes in this thing and that's what we're looking to do with this pipe, not literally, because that, that would be counterintuitive, but at least in the cost anyway.
You heard it here first, folks.
Yeah, exactly. It's the newest conspiracy. So anyway, that nine and a half million dollars, right off the bat, we want to try to get that number down through value engineering. Once we get it down a little bit, we will be trying to get some grant funds available. There is that forgiveness at nineteen percent. The nineteen percent is guaranteed. We have heard that it may be higher than nineteen percent. No one's given us a definitive number, just that, you know, there's potential, it could be higher. And so I wouldn't venture a guess on that either. The other piece is trying to go to the state and federal governments, trying to secure additional ARPA funds or the most recent, the Bill, Bill, and I forget what the acronym stands for, but it's essentially more infrastructure funds to try to further defray that cost. We've set up meetings with Representatives Lotnick's office, Senator Commerford on the State House level, and we, last week, had a meeting with Senator Markey down in DC and the week prior, I set up a meeting with Laurie Trahan's office, trying to find areas where we can bring some more funds home to Winchonan. So even with these efforts and if we can get that nine point five down to about six point five, that still would come out on a thirty-year borrowing to about three hundred and fifty thousand a year, give or take. And that, I think, is the biggest underlying question is how would we fund that ultimately? You know, would it be exclusively on the backs of the ratepayers? Would it be some type of blended solution where there is, I think everybody agrees, although not necessarily to the percentage, but there's agreement that there's value to the town on the town side and the existence of our water sewer system. You know, what that number is, I couldn't venture a guess and that's part of a community discussion that I think we're gonna need to have. But the biggest takeaway, and I'm sorry, I'm talking a long time about this, but there's a lot to cover, the biggest takeaway is this needs to happen. It's gonna get worse. We're gonna be working to find ways over the next year or two to try to defray this cost and shrink it down as much as humanly possible, whether it be reducing the project cost or finding additional grant funds or some mix therein. I think the difficult part for this is we can't apply for this trust, our funds from this trust, without this vote. We can't really start the process of hunting down those grants and other things until we have the vote secured for these funds. We have to kind of go about it backwards, which I think is a tough sell for the people of Winchonan. And I think we need to try to illustrate the importance of this pipeline, but also I think the efforts that, that my office and our team is gonna try to make to reduce that cost as much as humanly possible.
Justin, I have a question. You talk about the need to do this, but I'm not sure that everyone knows why that need is. Is it water quality? Are we losing water from the time it starts in the pipe before it gets to a billable space? Could you maybe clarify that a little bit?
Yes, and thank you for the alley-oop. It's a good question that I think sometimes is so obvious on its face to me that I forgot to take the time to explain it, so thank you. So that pipe is failing. It's the main transmission line from the water filtration plant, which is located in Ashburnham. It carries all of the water, so everybody that's on town water gets it from that source. It runs through that pipe and gets to town. It is the main. That main, the way it's laid out, a solid structure, but it runs through swamp and woods and rocks and God knows what else. So it makes it exceedingly difficult to maintain. That said, our system has been having an issue for some time now and it's, you know, a conversation has been going on in this community for a really long time in terms of escalating water costs, the, you know, water sewer rates increasing and why. And one of the components of that is that our infrastructure is failing and we're losing a lot of water. So we're losing, of the water that's treated and piped into Winchonan, twenty-eight percent of that water or more is lost before it even gets to a meter, before it even gets to a house or business. It's lost, it's lost somewhere in the road, somewhere in the It's lost, it's lost somewhere in the road, somewhere in the ground, we're not sure where. Good chunk of that could be from this main, which leaks pretty regularly and is known to have some pretty critical deficiencies. Beyond that, the fact that it is the main pipe, if that goes down, nobody has water. And we could fix it, but it costs money to fix it, and it's gonna go down again, and you'll be paying money over and over and over and over again to put a Band-Aid on this thing when you need to just replace it.
On a scale of one to ten, with ten being desperate, where are we at with the water line?
Well, you don't want to ever wait till ten, and honestly, I'm not an engineer, I couldn't put a number on it, but from what I've gleaned from conversations, would you say a seven is fair? Mr. Corodo says eight, so we'll say seven and a half, split the difference.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, one of the things is, the line is over, almost seventy-five years old, was built in the fifties. It makes it very difficult to maintain those lines as-is. What you're seeing across the country is infrastructure projects being put off. I'll give you the best example is Jackson, Mississippi. Where their infrastructure collapsed, and nobody had water for going on six weeks.
That's my concern.
That is the only line we have coming in. Now, not everybody in town is on town water, obviously, there are lots of people at home going, "Why do I want to pay for this?" But it also is the schools, it's the municipal buildings, it's the fire hydrants. If that system was to go down, all we have left is what's up in the hills, in the tanks, and that would have to be rationed to the point where it's impossible.
Those people on Wells would have extra friends really quick.
Right, so, no, nobody, nobody wants to come up here and say, "I need to spend nine million dollars." But in the end, we've been kicking this can down the road since I was elected to the board in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. We've been going after this project. We also put in a, a meter, if everybody remembers, at the Winchonan line many, many years ago, which we've not been able to use. So, we can't really tell if the water has been leaking before the, before our line or after the line. But by replacing the line, it guarantees the future of the water system for many years to come. And, you know, I think, when you look around the country, there's more money coming out from the federal government in infrastructure projects, especially now with a lot of communities, Flint, Michigan, Jackson, Mississippi, there's other communities that are having the same problems, and the federal government will need to address a lot of these infrastructure. And in the Build Back Better Plan, the one that just passed recently, there is money out there. This borrowing article is like when we go to the school building authority. When you go to the school building authority and you say, "I need a new furnace," they say, "We're gonna reimburse you X amount of dollars, but you've got to say you're committed to the project." This is a very similar approach. They want to make sure that the town's committed to the project by saying, "We're, we're looking to fund up to nine million, five-hundred-and-sixty thousand, but that won't be the true number when it's all said and done." They just want the commitment from the town. And that's, obviously, what we, we have to emphasize to the community, that truly it won't be nine-point-five, but we have to bo, enable us to borrow it, because that's what the law requires us to do. And that's two different conversations we have to have at the same time. And I think that's where people will get confused in saying, "Well, you're telling me it's gonna cost nine-point-five, but it really isn't. Can't tell you that until we can track down all the grants." But in order to move forward, just like any school building project, you have to come up with the vote for the money first. And I think that's what Mr. Salzbeck's trying to, trying to convey.
That is correct.
Have we looked at? I was just gonna ask if, if we've looked into federal funds, if, if there's any federal funds available for this?
That's what Mr. Salzbeck just has been doing.
Oh, okay.
They're already on top of that with Senator Markey and Laurie Trahan. So, phone calls to your congressman and senator are always helpful, and also the State House.
You know, as you think about sources of, of funding for the overall project, it's certainly a legitimate use of ARPA money, and where do we stand with ARPA money right now?
Roughly one million even. So, the only outstanding expense we have at this point upcoming, it's unapproved but potentially anticipated, read into whatever that means, but is hazard pay for, for responders or other town employees through the COVID-nineteen pandemic. We're trying to drill down what exactly that figure would look like, but I would say comfortably you could, you know, carve out five-hundred thousand for that pipe. And I think that's another piece, or once again, that this thing, it's gonna be a blended funding source, five, six, seven different areas that we're gonna be drawing from. We don't want to throw it at the foot of one person or one group of people. And if we can chip away at this thing bit by bit, I, I think there's a shot there. You know, the, the project itself, it'd be another two years out. If this went through, we'd be spending the next two years trying to line up those grants, trying to increase that forgiveness number. All of these intangibles that we can't nail down right now, we, we need the vote first, unfortunately, but we'll be able to nail down after. It takes an element of trust, which I know sometimes is in short supply, but we're trying to do the right thing here.
Yeah, and I think that certainly a lot of the federal money, the infrastructure money that is being appropriated, that communities that have their project in hand are going to go to the top of the list. It's where you want to be shovel-ready, to be able to, to guarantee that we get those funds. Questions? Yes, Jane?
One of the things I'm curious about, when you talk about it losing at least twenty-eight percent of our water a year, is even if it's more than, do you, is there, is there a dollar figure that's gonna be associated with that? Because I'm just curious to think that, I mean, I, I get the seriousness, I'm on town water, that, you know, can't, can't run water, can't flush my toilet, can't take a shower, yeah, got it all. But I'm just, I'm interested from a perspective, from just a perspective on this, of how much is it costing us to have such a deficient pipe, even in advance of this thing hopefully is failing?
So, I'd want to stress that twenty-eight percent figure isn't exclusively from this pipe, it's system-wide. So, I don't want the expectation that if we fix this pipe, it'll, it'll fix everything. I think that there's a certain allowable amount, and the percentage escapes me at the moment, but I think it's around ten percent. Is that about right? An allowable water loss? Ten to twelve, it's established by DEP, and so that's considered typical. So, you have this giant system, there's gonna be some leaks, and I think there's a general understanding of that. Ours is not typical at twenty-eight percent. In terms of an exact dollar figure, I, I couldn't offer one right now.
That's okay, I was just curious to know if there was one associated with it, so that people could know that, you know, not fixing this, there's a cost associated with it.
That's a good thing, if people know what they're gonna save in dollar-wise, it makes a difference.
Now, the other question I would have is, do these leaks in any way, the deficiencies in this pipe in any way compromise the quality of the water that's coming through it?
I mean, it's a, it's a component. I don't think there's any reason to have concern about our water quality, it, it is all tested by the state regularly, and it, it's in good condition. I would have to assume that if there were fewer leaks, their water quality would increase.
I'm not concerned myself about this, I'm just trying to figure out ways to.
To sell it.
Right.
Right. Ways to present the argument.
So, with older pipe, that's seventy-five to hundred years old, you get tuberculosis that's inside the pipe, which causes staining in the toilets, the sinks. That respect, when you bring the newer pipe in, it's ductile iron, it's coated on the inside, you, you take away the turbulence that's in the pipe, which provides cleaner water to the residents. So, you'll see a difference on Central Street because of what was done, there's a small section in between Jackson and Central, and then after that, you'll have clean water all the way to the tanks. But we're also looking, because the pipes were replaced on Route Twelve, that aren't that old, so you'll have a direct source from Ashmanham all the way up to, to both tanks with newer pipes, so you'll have better quality of water.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barborough.
You're welcome.
Move on to Article Seven, financial articles, see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash to sum of one-hundred-ten-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars to the OPEB trust account that was established to mitigate the town's liability for other post-employment benefits.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so this is one of our financial policies, this committee should be very familiar with it. And we have been committed over the past year plus to holding ourselves accountable to, to funding some of these various liabilities that we have. And for Article Seven, the one-hundred-ten, five-ninety-three figure that you see there represents ten percent of our annual healthcare costs, as written in the financial policy, and that is to help cover our OPEB trust account.
I'd point out that, that the intention of the, of the policy is that that figure would be included in the, the budget voted on at town. I know it was, it was missed this year, and you promised that you'd bring it to the town with this article. But in the future, we wouldn't be looking to take that out of free cash, we'd be looking to include that in the operating budget.
I, I think that was the original intent, is the committee understood it, and I think it was missed because I understood it differently. And maybe now's not the time for that conversation, but if there'd be an appetite in the future for considering that, that figure would be funded from free cash unless unable to do so, in which case it would have to be built into the budget, which would provide me some flexibility on the budget side, but once again, maybe right now is not the, the venue.
Yeah.
Unless you want to.
Conversation another time.
Yeah, okay, but yes.
That's a budget discussion.
Yeah.
Any questions about Article Seven?
For town meeting, you might want to have just a total of what we have in that account.
I think we appropriated fifty last year.
Yeah, and we had twelve or something, but just if you had that figure handy, because somebody will ask.
Thank you.
Article Eight, let's see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law's Chapter Forty, Section Thirteen-D relative to establishing a reserve fund for future contractual separation payments upon the termination of a town employee or officer's employment, and further, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash to sum of fifty thousand dollars to such a reserve account established to mitigate town's liability. I guess my question is, the town voted last year to start this fund with fifty thousand dollars, so this would be the second year, and it would increase the total amount of the fund to a hundred thousand dollars.
That is correct. So, it's another financial policy that we're looking to fund, and, and the exact number escapes me, but I believe there, there was a magic number of about two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars that was our concern in terms of exposure.
That's right.
Yep.
It's just the, the way the wording reads, it sounds like it's a vote to establish it, and I believe we already did establish it.
Oh, understood, an important distinction. So, the wording there that you're seeing is deliberate, and that was from legal counsel. So, the way that they perceived the language that we had at the last special town meeting, they felt that it wasn't enough to indicate that such a, a, an account was established. He felt the way it was worded only said that we would fund it, but not establish it. So, after the fact, he recommended putting that language in just definitively to make it clear it's established, with the understanding that last year's fifty thousand would be part of this.
Thank you.
Good catch. I expect no less, sharp eye, sharp eye. And I think for that one, it, it's really important, and we've seen it over the last year, just in terms of the tsunami of retirements that we've been hit with, and that will probably continue over the next few years. So, it's important, I think, to insulate ourselves, you know, from those different payouts as they happen.
Certainly the intention, I think we've all seen many times in the past, where there'd be a special law or an article that come up with enough money to cover somebody's buyout. And while those historic contracts that included some generous buyouts have, are, are fewer now, but we still have a number of them to get through. Right, Article Nine is to see if the vote, town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of eighty thousand dollars to the stabilization fund. And I think the eighty-thousand-dollar figure was based on ten percent of, of free cash?
That is correct, so originally, we had one-sixty, when we were a little more optimistic that more free cash would be certified. That eighty thousand was based on, I think more recently, we thought it was gonna be a seven thousand, or, excuse me, seven-hundred-thousand-dollar figure. As I mentioned today, I learned it might be closer to a million, it's kind of all over the map right now. It should typically be ten percent with certified free cash. We thought eighty percent would get us there. If it's, ends up being, you know, a million is certified, then we're gonna be twenty thousand light on that.
I mean, I'm satisfied with the fact that it's based on what we have for certified cash right now, not what we know we're gonna get.
Exactly, so, okay.
The bulk then would come in the following year when the, well, here's a question I have, maybe you can answer this. We, we know that if, if all of the grants had been, if we had gotten all the money that we're supposed to get from grants in a timely fashion, that we'd probably be looking at about one-point-eight million dollars in free cash that's certified. And there's about a hundred, one-point-one million of that, that is in the pipeline, so to speak, once, once people request it properly. When that money comes in, is that, would that be recognized as free cash for FY twenty-two or free, free cash for FY twenty-three?
Free cash for FY twenty-three, so I, I think, if I'm guessing where you're getting at, is that no matter when it comes in, whether it be now or later, either way, we're contributing that ten percent, whether we capture it now or capture it in the year.
Yeah, and, and it really, it was just a sense of, of how that works. It's not money owed from twenty-two, so it wouldn't get, I mean, once you certify free cash, that's a moment in time, and then late, late payments come in for the next year.
Right.
Okay. Any questions about Article Nine?
No, good question.
All right, Article Ten, see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash to sum of fifty thousand dollars to supplement the finance committee's reserve account in response to escalating energy and inflationary costs.
So, Article Ten, there was a small alteration in the wording, so I had originally referred to it as a special fund. At the request of legal counsel, it's just gonna go into the general finance committee reserve fund, reason being that, that you need to, it's a little bit of a heavier lift to create a special reserve, basically. So, we can still set that aside and earmark it for that purpose, but functionally, on the accounting side, it would just go into your reserve, so it would supplement.
It's a reserve.
Your forty thousand that currently exists, or, well, thirty now, because we expended ten of it recently.
So, my only concern would be that it is earmarked energy and inflationary, it's not.
We'd be responsible for that.
Yeah.
That, it makes sense, too, because the reserve fund, I mean, the anticipation here is that there'll be accounts in the general operating budget that will be over due to the inflationary costs, and so to add money to the reserve to cover those costs makes some sense.
And I think the, the wording there was deliberate in terms of inflationary, a, a bulk of it, I think, what we're expecting is energy costs, whether that be liquid fuel, you know, gasoline, deliverable-fueled buildings, or electricity. Another commodity, though, that we're expecting some fluctuations on potentially is salt for snow and ice, and so that's another component that we want to keep a close eye on, but I don't anticipate we'd be drawing off that figure for that purpose.
And I think the, the point to be made is that. Okay. And I think the point to be made is that that would cover contingencies that are, you know, that are currently, for purposes that are currently in the budget. So it doesn't add something to the budget for a different purpose.
Exactly. It's just if we see a large swing in a commodity, just given the current economic outlook that we're in, that's the intent.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions on Article X? All right. Article XI, let's see if the town will vote to pursue into General Law's Chapter 43B, Section 10A to amend the town charter as recommended by the Charter Bylaw Review Committee in a document entitled Proposed Charter Changes, October 2022, on file in the office of the town clerk and available to the town's website, with a text to be inserted and underlined and a text to be deleted and crossed out. Revisions include, but are not limited to, ministerial and clerical clarifications, internal consistency, and references to and updates based on state law and other matters. I'll turn this over to you.
Actually, it's, there's only one change from the attachment that I sent you, and it was a good catch by Chairman Legree last night. The very last page, Section 78, vacancies in appointed multiple member bodies, posted on the town bulletin board and the town website. We're going to add that in there, because right now, it just says posted on the town bulletin board. Okay?
Yep. And that's the one that's highlighted in red.
And that was a good catch. And it's actually written this way in the bylaws as well, so I've made note of that for next year to make that change.
Now, most of the changes here seem to be clerical.
Yeah, it's capitalization, it's meeting. The only significant change is, I think, whereas in appointment powers, Development Industrial Commission, Forest Commissional Capital Planning Committee, they aren't appointed by the selectmen. So we had to make those changes. And it's zoning Board of Appeals, not just Board of Appeals.
All right. Certainly, the practice in the last few years has been that it's, the boards, the representatives from each of the boards-
That's right.
-that make up the majority of those committees.
And then cleaning up a little bit for the recall, it's like provided at least 20% of the total number of voters, blah, blah. It was just horrendously complicated. 15% of the registered voters in town. Pretty simple.
Yep.
Right. You're actually doing that now.
The day of the adjournment, day after the adjournment of the annual town meeting. So it says that if the town election occurs prior to the date of the annual town meeting, doesn't it always occur prior to the date?
No. Yeah, I think it does.
Because if it didn't, if it didn't-
But we also had that year of COVID, where we did not have our annual town meeting until September. So everyone took their effective offices July 1st to be there at the beginning of the new year. And it was kind of complicated. So it came back to the day after the adjournment of the town meeting, because then you would have a town meeting, whether it be August or early September, with brand-new people that weren't there to-
Well, yeah. And my concern was that if there was some reason there was a town election after the annual town meeting-
Yeah, and that's not-
-then this language would mean that they would have to wait till the next annual town meeting.
We've never, never in the history so far of the town, never say never, had a town meeting before the election.
So it's the word "if" that bothers me. But I understand the intent of it.
I guess you can't be definitive. I mean, can you say the town election-
If it happens.
...will occur? I mean, I don't know. This is just what was in there before. The only thing we changed was they take effect after the town meeting rather than July 1st.
I'm not going to-
I don't know.
That's why I don't get on those committees.
That's a good point. But I, for the next round, I'll put it on there for them to look at.
Yeah, just look at it. Makes it sound like if it happens.
The next chair could do it.
If it doesn't happen, then we'll do it the other way. All right. Any other questions about any of the warrant articles? All right. Then the finance committee is going to discuss and vote on our recommendations for the warrant articles.
So the public hearing is over, and we're into our votes?
So I mentioned that Article I, we will. What I'm thinking that we'd want to do, and I think it's consistent with the themes that we've had in the past, is do a report on the fact that we've got this $1.1 million that is, will be free cash, but not this year, and why it's not going to be this year. And the fact that that limits certainly the number of articles and things we might have done with free cash. But carrying a million dollars into the next year is not a bad situation either. So it kind of forces us to, not to go to the piggyback.
So I make a motion to recommend Article I?
Second.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Quartz. Any questions about that? Any other ideas you think we should focus in on?
I think this, if you get too complicated, they will go to sleep before we get to the rest of the articles.
Okay. We'll do that. Article II, which is the-
Are we going to vote on this?
Transfer $100,000, yeah, the streetlights.
Mr. Chair, do we have to vote on Article I first?
Oh, I thought we did.
No, we just made the motion.
We got a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Mr. Guerrero?
Aye.
Mr. Quartz?
Aye.
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 The delay, the chair votes aye. All right, let me put this down, so Linda will know. Okay. Article II is the $100,000 from free cash for the supplemental downtown streetlight improvements.
I make the motion that the finance committee recommend Article II.
Motion to recommend, seconded by Mr. Delay. Any questions or discussion? All right, hearing done. Mr. Guerrero?
Aye.
Mr. Quartz?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Article number three, supplemental-
To recommend Article III? I move to recommend Article III.
Okay. So right now, we're recommending Article III at 145,000.
I was going to ask if there'd be any interest in recommending the article at a range of 145 to 215 to be determined?
I don't think we can do that until the selectmen agree on it. But we usually meet prior to town meeting, so we can take a vote then and adjust our vote.
To reaffirm if you had to. Okay.
Yep. Do you agree?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I'll second that.
All right. Moved and seconded by Mr. Delay. Any questions or discussion? All right, hearing done. Mr. Guerrero?
Aye.
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 All right. The chair votes aye. Article IV, supplemental highway materials and $95,000 out of free cash.
I move to recommend Article IV.
A motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Quartz. Time we drink. Any questions, discussion on Article IV? Hearing, hearing done. We'll take a vote. Mr. Guerrero?
Aye.
Mr. Quartz?
Aye.
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 And chair votes aye. Article V, five-station design for $618,750.
I move to recommend Article V.
As an exclusion question.
I second.
Moved and seconded, seconded by Mr. Delay, moved by Dr. Ward. Any questions, discussion? All right, hearing done. Mr. Guerrero?
Aye.
Mr. Quartz?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Article VI, clean water and drinking water estate for $9,560,000 on a 30-year borrowing.
I move to recommend Article VI.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Quartz. Any questions, discussion?
I think there'll be some discussion prior to town meeting on how to present this. Mr. Salzbeck will get his calendar out after this meeting, and we'll make some appointments with him, because I think we need a little more clarification. But I do agree that we need it.
All right. So the motion is to recommend. Mr. Guerrero?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Quartz, I think I just asked you once already.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Article VII is $110,593 to be added to the OPEB trust account from free cash.
I move to recommend Article VII.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? Hearing done. Mr. Guerrero?
Aye.
Mr. Quartz?
Aye.
Dr. Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Delay? Chair votes aye. Article VIII, the funded contractual separation payout of $50,000 from free cash.
I move to recommend Article VIII.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Delay. Any questions or discussions? Hearing done.
Aye.
Mr. Guerrero?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Article IX, to add $80,000 to the stabilization count from free cash.
I move to recommend Article IX.
Second.
Article IX is moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Guerrero?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Delay?
Chair votes aye. Article 10, add to the finance committee reserve $50,000 in anticipation of increased energy costs.
I move to recommend Article 10.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing done. Mr. Guerrero?
Aye.
Mr. Quartz?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the town, Article 11, which is the town charter amendment.
I move to recommend Article 11.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing done. Mr. Guerrero?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. All right. Any member comments? One of the things I wanted to point out, I don't know if you've gotten any emails from the town finance committee about their annual meeting in November. I think it's the first Saturday in November. I'll forward you if you haven't gotten that information, and if you're interested in going.
Early voting. Early voting.
Early voting. Yeah. No excuse.
The only question I had, Mr. Salzbeck, I heard last night at the selectmen's meeting that you were looking for someone from finance committee to be on your interview team for your accountant. Mr. Kane? I think he volunteered.
I think he trucks the banger.
But you're the BA.
What is the commitment, the timeline?
So it was posted last Friday. We're expecting responses over the next two weeks. And I would anticipate interviews to be held around Thursday, the 13th potentially, or if not, the start of the next week.
October 13?
Yes. I'm sorry, did I say November? Getting ahead of itself.
I'm back. I'm back by then, I know that. I don't know what else I got going. Where's my-
It's over there.
Oh.
Old people.
That's a problem, I tell you. Laugh. So like the 13th, is that, you said that Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
All right. It's a one-day event, or you're meeting with the committee, going over something first, the background information?
It depends on the availability of the candidates. So I'd like to do it on the 13th. If not the 13th, I would imagine either Monday, the 17th, or Tuesday, the 18th. I can let you know as we get closer.
And what time of day you're thinking it is?
It's a little far out to nail it down. I know you keep a pretty commanding schedule.
I'll try to work something out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 8:34.
Public input, any other public input?
All right. And before you leave, Mr. Salzbeck, you bring your little calendar over.